You ready? Okay.
Yeah.
Let me know. Yay? Okay. All right, it is called Order in 6:35 PM?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're gonna have regular agenda items tonight. This is your special meeting call. 2A will hold a public hearing to consider the approval of an ordinance granting a variance to section 17.06.009D and 17.06.0105 of the City of Bolverde Code of Ordinances related to tree mitigation and tree protection requirements at 2541, 2545, and 2549 Bolverde Road, Bolverde, Texas. We'll also, to be held a public hearing, consider an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bolverde, Texas, amending Chapter 3 Building Regulations, City of Bolverde Code of Ordinance by amending Article 3.08.102, permitted sign structures and general regulations to define sizing and a method of area calculation for attached building signs. And then number three will also have an executive session. And in this, where it's pursuant to section 551.101 of the Open Meetings Act, Government Code, a quorum of the governing body hereby confines it to closed session. 3A, the City Council will meet an executive session to seek the advice of legal counsel about pending a contemplated litigation to discuss a settlement offer or all matters in which the duty of attorney to the City Council under the Texas Rules of Professional Conduct conflict with the Texas Open Meetings Act to win, ethics guidelines for elected officials. 3B, pursuant to Texas Government Code, annexation 551.074 Personnel Matters, the City Council will deliberate an executive closed session to deliberate appointment, deployment, evaluation, and duties of the interim city manager. I would like to say that we do have a quorum for tonight's meeting. Councilman Hawkins is being zoomed in from his location. And Councilman Watson is absent tonight. Okay, so, we will start by looking at 2A. Hold a public hearing to consider the approval of an ordinance granting a variance to section 17.06.009D and 17.06.01, or 0105 of the City of Bolverde Code of Ordinances related to tree mitigation and tree protection requirements at 2541, 2545, 2549 Bolverde Road, Bolverde, Texas.
All right, Mayor and members of council. This item originally been slated for discussion at the regular meeting on July 8th. We had a quorum where it was completed, so we're doing it now. The applicant, correct me if this has changed. Have you guys come into alignment with the PNC recommendation now? Or are y'all gonna propose something different? Okay. So, the original application was considered back by PNC last month. The recommendation from the commission was to allow tree removal up to 50% of the caliber inches on the site without requiring an arborist letter as required in the ordinance and allow a... That amount would be $75,750. And we would not require, they're recommending not requiring any additional mitigation for the remaining 50% of the trees that are removed from the site and none at all for those in driveways and detention areas. They also are recommending that for the portion of driveways and parking lots that are constructed within the drip line of protected, especially majestic historic tree, that they be allowed to be constructed of impervious materials under the second provision. I'm gonna ask the applicant to come up and give a more detailed explanation of their project and their request. Cheers.
There, Councilman. Thank you all very much for the opportunity to come up today. I'm very excited to finally share the complete vision of what we've been working on over there since July 13th of 2021, when we bought the property. It occurred to me in the last couple of weeks that I hadn't really introduced Bolverde Village Holdings and the multiple times we've gone up before both council and PNC and twice before zoning board of adjustments. So, Bolverde Village Holdings is, I guess, first and foremost, my wife Ashley and I as the general partners. We have a 1% interest in this project. Our limited partners are some family from the Corpus Christi area where we are both from and a couple from our church Riverside Wade and Christie Kingdom. I say all that to say, we are neighbors. We are part of the community. Our partners have been extremely gracious in supporting our vision for the project, which is all explained tonight, really aligns basically flawlessly with the downtown Bolverde Village vision, DVD vision on the city's website and with the tree preservation ordinance as we'll go through that. You'll see as we go through it, that, you know, we're saving roughly 88% of the protected trees on the property with this design. Most developers, especially coming in from out of town, would not have taken that approach. I think I've also seen personally in some of these council meetings that's larger, more well-heeled developers from out of town, often they'll show up themselves. They send their consultants up, their experts up. Every time we've come before PNC Council and CPOA, it's been us representing ourselves. This is our, this is our community. This is our project and it's been a passion project for us to date for sure. As Mr. Bats pointed out, we are asking to match what planning and zoning recommended in terms of the financial piece, the cash and lube. I will say, I wasn't allowed to make this provision in the application, but I was told I could bring this up here. I wouldn't necessarily write it the way that PNC recommended where we distinguish between trees for the driveway and trees for detention. The amount of 75,000, 75,750 as cash and lube is equivalent to 252 and a half inches out of an 800, a total of 887 and a half that we'd have to mitigate for. That's 28% of the cash, 28% of the mitigation as cash and lube for all trees. The way PNC broke it down, they said, well, we make build the detention, so we'll eliminate that. Make it 50% cash and lube for the driveway trees. I say that because I know there's concern about precedent. I have some more to say about the idea of precedent in a bit, but I, to me, we're exceeding the ordinance basis of the 25%. It's a substantial amount of money. And as we go through everything else we've done to protect the trees, I think you'll see that that's, I hope you'll see that that's a reasonable request. But in the meantime, since we came before PNC, I was finally thankful to get an arborist to come out and do a second tree survey, specifically looking for trees between four and six inches, which the ordinance states are the preferred method of replacement. We've come up with as a reporting that's been provided to staff and staff still reviewing it, so there's some work to be done there. Some updates to drawings and whatnot, but it looks like another 168 and a half inches of trees in that four to six inch class, which are designated as replacement trees. They're existing trees. They're obviously far more established than planting brand new six inch trees could possibly be. So, you add that together and there is an ordinance that requires, they are having to plant eight canopy trees and those are in landscape drawings that you have. Eight canopy trees for stream for like road drainage, so most of them go along that detention and all the rest of that permission going along Bolverde Road. Those eight canopy trees represent over 48 inches of mitigation. So, the 887 and a half inches, what we're asking for right now covers 50% of the total mitigation at a cost of, check to the city of 75,750. The, obviously, we had to pay it through the second survey. That 168 and a half inches, that $300 an inch, that's $50,000 with additional mitigation. I have a lot to say, sir. There is a point I lost there, I believe, by all means.
Just a lot of information about trees. I appreciate it.
So, what's our vision for the property? As I mentioned, our vision for the property has always been since day one, really well aligned with the downtown Bolverde Village vision. To maintain the country atmosphere, I'll go through some of them. Objective 5.2, as stated in the downtown Bolverde Village document, and a lot of this, actually, this isn't in the package, this is just my presentation I brought this. Is, says encourage people to visit, visit the village of Bolverde. At our last market, I talked to people from Halodus, Ernie, Blanco, Bronfels, Sibelo, and Shurts that had come into town, spent money in the village, as much as 45 minutes away, just to come to our market. My point is going through this to show that we've been proceeding in alignment with the vision and this project continues to do so. Manage the future growth of the city to preserve the character and uniqueness that is Bolverde, encouraging land development that enhances aesthetically pleasing appearance for the city. I think if anybody has driven down Bolverde Road over the last five years, I hope that they would agree that you definitely enhance the aesthetic of that property while not changing its character at all. One of the things I want to point out is that with this plan, the focal point from Bolverde Road will always be that barn that's been there since the night. They're now hosted make. And I think if you're familiar with the topography and the trees that exist on the property, you won't see what's going on in the back from the road. All you'll see is a new driveway and a bunch of barns. If you could go, miss Hannah, to the color image. You'd probably really see it. Pull those pages out and compare the two. I meant those for you, but, yeah, this one makes it a little hard to see some of the development part. The other one's clear as far as that goes, but that's a canopy exhibit that our landscape architect put together with RBK, Aaron Christian, showing after cedar removal, the estimated current canopy. You can see the density along that first terrace of Bolverde Road, like I mentioned. You really won't even see the development in the back. Like I said, I think five years from now, it won't look any different. It will continue to look like a country part of the village. Preserve the natural and rural character of the city as much as possible. I've already spoken to that. Encourage an aesthetically pleasing appearance for the city. I think we're working on that. Encourage tasteful development of all kinds. It's C2 commercial zone and fine design development, so it's, it's zoned for commercial uses. That's what we're asking to be put there. Use the relaxed atmosphere of the hill country to Bolverde's advantage. If you haven't been to the market or been by the nature yet, I'd love for everybody to do that at some point. I think you'll find it's one of the most relaxed, chill places really in the county. It's, and it's, we're only gonna increase that between our project and casinos and et cetera. Promote appropriate economic development. This plan, which, I'll walk through it real quick, but there'll be an improved new driveway where the existing driveway is between the cave house and the barn. It goes up to the back property line. If you're familiar, I think we talked when we were here for the food trucks permitting about that big stone, like...
Sister.
Sister, right. That will be sort of the focal entrance, it's staying to where that looping driveway branches. The old house up top, we do plan to keep and turn it into a cafe, coffee shop bakery type thing. And then there'll be locations for 10 new commercial buildings. Those will be sold on a square foot basis into a condominium concept. So, the plan would be, and the way we'd get our money out of the building would be to sell their 2,000 to like 4,500 square feet each. Someone would come along, buy that, that would be the extent of their building allowed, allowed. And then we would provide through this permitting process, the infrastructure, parking and all of that. They could split it and lease half of it to another tenant, but they would own their own building. And we expect between 10 of those and the existing house, that could bring 11 to maybe as many as 18 to 20 new businesses into the village. A lot of them probably coming up from like Stone Oak or somewhere like that. We've actually, we've heard a lot of people who are interested in being able to build their own space. Commercial space is at extraordinary premium in our community. So...
Are these, should we care? Are these more office space, doctor's office space?
So, the...
It seems like that's what we have downtown for the most part right now, is office.
We certainly want to see kind of the restaurant go up in there. Like I said, for sure there'll be this cafe. We plan to keep that building and, you know, probably at least it's to somebody who wants to run shop in there. I have to say that, you know, they will be C2 or if someone wants to go beyond C2 or outside of C2, they could come in for a specialty permit. We would work that into, you know, a due diligence period. We wouldn't sell it to somebody till they had approval. But I can't sit up here and say, this is exactly what it's gonna be. We have to be able to sell those parcels. But we certainly want to see some things that are retail oriented, arts and crafts types oriented. A number of our vendors from the market have expressed interest. Some of them wanted to put in like a commercial bakery where they would bake their own goods a few days a week and possibly also then sublet to someone, come in and bake. I really believe genuinely it would be a really cool place that has a little bit of...
So, is it gonna kind of reflect the same tone of like the district on 46? It's gonna have the same components?
It'll have, I mean, I, I hope it'll have some, some of those same com... Yeah, I would generally say yes, but with more control and more planning, you know.
Right.
That was a little bit sort of gone together. But, yeah, we open to those types of uses. One thing, actually, I really want to talk to the casinos about it, but, you know, we, I'm pretty sure that's less than 1,000 feet property line to property line from the school so that somebody wanted to have brewery or something like that, we'd have to get permission from Living Rock to go to something like that. But I, I'm also hopeful that as it progresses, we might be able to manage to build a building or two ourselves and those would absolutely be for more artistic, retail, food oriented type stuff. But, you know, right now, we are a part of a lot of money, so...
Yeah, you gotta get this... Hey Clint, you've been here for a while. So, what is the intent of the tree ordinance?
I think the biggest thing is to preserve our loggers. To, to preserve those and to replace all those that are, you know, those that are taken out. Because, you know, you see builders come in and, you're obviously not doing that, but you'll see builders come in like, like when ours.
Or, or KB.
Or, or any of them. And clear cut and plant a little tree like this.
That's what I was...
In 20 years, it's gonna be a nice tree, but right now, it's not. So, you know, when these trees have been here 100 plus years, now they're beautiful majestic trees, you know.
Exactly. That's the way I see it. Who preserves the atmosphere of the hill country?
And to prevent people from coming in and haphazardly like clear cutting?
Exactly.
Okay. So, is this expense gonna be a barrier of entry for you and your, your business? Or is it gonna take away from your capability to make it, make it what you want it to be?
Commissioner Goff, we have sacrificed profit. Our partnership is willingly sacrificed profit in a commercial use property, which is the definition, definition of that is for profit, right? Essentially the blast law legal definition. It's own commercial. We've limited the profitability to meet the tree ordinance. And I actually have that in the packet in my statement here. There's 10 provisions in the purpose statement of chapter 17. And I plan to walk through those. I can tell you, we can check them all. To your question, as it stands, if y'all were to take the mitigation, I've already mentioned the 53%, which is 28% cash and lube, the additional tree survey and the eight trees we have to plant for the buffering. The remaining 47% would be like seven more trees that we have to plant at six inches in diameter. And you can imagine, first of all, where I'm gonna put them, I'm sure I could squeeze them into places, but the holes and the trenching, the disruption of native virgin soil that's never been busted up, it's gonna be more harmful than good. It's gonna need a lot of water to establish those trees. Despite the rain we recently received, you know, the tragedy that came along with it, still we're not out of the water, right? So, to your point, I think, and I've asked around, we're probably looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars for the trees that have placed. That would put enough of a hardship on the project that it might very likely stall it out.
Right. Imagine trenching for irrigation. I mean, you would, you would have to go through predicted roots of some of these trees.
Absolutely, yes. Wherever we're gonna put them is gonna require going across some big trees. And getting back to the, definitely one of the main purposes is to protect the biggest, most beautiful trees. We have 14 majestic trees. Those are 36 inches or greater in diameter, two of them are 50 inch trees. Not a single one of those 14. You look at the building, where the buildings are sitting, all of one is basically, this permit application doesn't involve the trees of the building footprints because those will come later and those will be exempt. But we used empty space for those buildings. We saved all 14 majestic trees. One of them sits in a roundabout on that drawing, which is obviously an expensive way to make a driveway, but it's gonna be super cool, right? Giant tree with a roundabout around it. There are 73 specimen trees. That's the 24 to 36 inch range. Three of those are coming out through this budget and they're in the driveway. The entire, I guess, damage, so to speak, would be in the six inch to 24 inch class of protected. And of those, 85% of those trees are staying at the end of this budget. Only taking out 15% of those smaller. There are more... I mean, I don't know.
So, let me understand the process then. So, if we don't grant you the variance, then you're still budgeted to pay the mitigation fee and the trees are still gonna have to come out and it's gonna hurt the project. Is that correct?
Well, as I mentioned, we, we would like to align with planning and zoning's recommendation, which is not full mitigation. What would be left would be either paying $300 an inch for somewhere around 400 something inches or, I mean, I, I, actually, that's not even an ordinance. That would be a variance as well, right? Or planting those additional 70 trees. The ordinance would require planting the additional 70 trees. And that just means you're responsible. Given a project like this, if we weren't bringing a project forward like this, I wouldn't be making the same argument. But again, if we go through the 10 reasons this thing exists, you'll see like the project was designed for, to meet the purpose of the tree ordinance. And when you read your authority, this concern about precedent, I certainly understand it, but precedent is an apples to apples comparison concept or an apples to oranges, oranges contrasting exercise, right? If someone came before you with, say, 19 acres and they wanted to remove 85% of the trees, actually, let me say, they wanted to remove 88% of the trees and I'm protecting 88% of the trees. And then they said, well, you give your cooks this sweetheart deal, you have to say, well, let's walk through these 10 reasons this tree ordinance exists. And you'll see that these are apples and oranges, right? So, there's no precedent there.
I personally, I'm personally not as concerned about the precedents. Okay, I, I do have a thought I want to finish. So, the, regardless of precedents, variances are a case by case basis and you aren't making your case right now. So, I'm not as worried about precedents.
Thank you. It came up during PNC, so I thought I needed to address it. But I can scrap it. You're right, it's a case by case and that's exactly how your authority is written. That special, special circumstances and conditions of the land, right? That, that the spirit and the intent, the spirit and the state of purpose of the ordinance has been met. And we've done that, so, thank you, sir. See, I'll skip, I, I could go through 10 more statements from the vision statement, but I, I think everybody can see, if you read the vision statement, we've been meeting it since the day we got there. So, some of the ways that we're meeting that, as I mentioned, it specifically mentions a farmer. That we have, there was a farmer who went down here, we got another one. Bringing in people from around the community. We are beautifying the property, maintaining the existing structures. That's something in the vision statement. The barn, as I said, will always be a focal point of this project. The cave house, I want y'all to know, we actually have under contract to sell that 4.2 acres to Elaine, the one. She's actually already in the process of a permitted demolition to remodel that old house. We didn't list it and we took less than what fair market value would be because that lady wants to turn that thing into, into basically a space for herself. She's a speech therapist and she wants to have a tea room and half of it. But she wants to save the building and we were willing to forego listing it, driving the price up for somebody who had the guts, I guess, and the capital to fix that place. It's a, it's a nightmare, but it's really cool. And if you haven't seen it lately, in the last like two or three weeks, it's been power washed and pressure washed and it's like blooming immaculate. It's gonna be beautiful and like I said, nothing will change along Bolverde Road. See, the entire development is less than four acres of impervious cover out of 14 and a half acres. If you're just looking at lots two and three, the parts we find to keep and further develop, there will be, there is no planned additional development for the lot one cave house. So, anyway, it's less than four acres of impervious cover that you see there out of 14 and a half. It's like 26% of the land for lots two and three that would ultimately be under impervious cover. And if you can see, the rest of it would be canopy basically. Uh, let's see. Talked a little bit about the commercial suites being part of an architecturally controlled condominium association. They'll obviously, our, our condominium contracts will have, you know, deep restrictions that match the city's ordinances, front porch is metal, stone, et cetera. It'll probably be go a little beyond that to try to maintain like a cohesive environment up there that'll look more like houses than office buildings. That's the goal, is it'll look, you know, like a more park up there. Let's see. About that. We bought this property because of the trees and as you can see, we're giving as many as we can while still actually getting a commercial development out of it. So, on the stated purpose of the tree preservation ordinance, subsection 1 of chapter 17.06.001, which is the purpose section of the tree ordinance, says, "Established rules and regulations governing protection and preservation of native or established trees within the city and TTJ." This is really more for councils, you know, for the development ordinance, but we've done that in spades. Again, 14 majestic trees, all of which are staying, 70 out of 73 of the specimen trees are sad. "Encourage the protection of healthy trees and provide for the replacement or replating of trees that are necessarily removed during construction, development, or redevelopment." Again, there will be over 570, 571 protected trees remaining on this property out of 654 when it's all said and done. That includes the trees for the future is being taken up for the building. So, we've absolutely checked off the idea of protecting healthy and established trees. The only, the only two places out of alternatives where we're asking for a variance and that's the planting of new tree. Get to that in a second. We're absolutely protecting those trees and if you look at the property, most of those have never been pruned since they've been grown. So, kind of getting back to the economics part, right? Every dollar I spend to trench a new tree and irrigate it is a dollar I don't have to get a cherry picker crew up there to clean up those existing trees. This exhibit, according to our architect, shows that we are only impacting 5% of the existing can. Three years after we're done with this, the cedar gone, and again, thank God, the rains we've had, if I get in there, feed in there, clean up those existing trees, all of y'all probably have lots of your property, that 5% will fill in in a three or five years tops where a bunch of six inch baby trees will take 15 years, 20 years to provide any can. So, I think that's, you know, certainly something to consider is that there are so many existing trees there. I think the canopy will fill itself back in by putting some love into the trees that we have. So, that's the point in number two, right? "Provide for the preservation and protection of larger native or established trees, which provide a valuable amenity to urban environment and which, once destroyed, can only be replaced after generations, if at all." Again, there's 14 specimen trees there and I will literally move them out to make sure not a single one of those gets one. 70 out of 73 specimen trees being protected. I find this one pretty interesting. "Provide for shade, windbreaks, and the cooling of air thereby reducing the requirements for air conditioning, heating, and the unnecessary use of scarce energy resources." Again, like, look at that and there won't be much open space left, right? Like, it's either building or tree canopy. So, I think we met that one, but it's the scarce use of energy resources I find interesting because planting 70 new trees will use our scariest and most important resource, which is our water. Somehow this, this doesn't speak to that, but to me, the idea that we would need to plant 70 more trees with the extent, the extensive levels that we've gone to to save trees is actually flying in the face of that ordinance because it's using our most precious resources when it's supposed to be protected. "Provide for open space and more efficient drainage of land thereby reducing effects of soil erosion and the need for additional drainage facilities." So, by clearing the cedar, if you look at the hillside now, you see this open park with big old trees providing shade and you can see up the hill when, you know, you're out there on it, not so much from the road because of the nature of that first terrace. But we definitely have created more open space. We've limited the overall impervious cover, which limits the drainage and limits the necessary detention. And I mentioned soil erosion. Well, again, there will be 571 protected trees remaining, not counting all the trees smaller than that. Since clearing the cedar, that hillside is covered in wildflowers and native grasses. I mean, it's, it's absolutely just exploded in it. That's helping prevent soil erosion. As I mentioned earlier, it's virgin hill country rock and soil, so if I go in there with rock saws, I dig trenches and... with rock saws, I dig trenches and dig holes, I'm actually creating an erosion problem and a soil runoff problem. Not helping. I'll destroy the new grasses in the meantime. To Commissioner Braviss's point, threading the needles to get those irrigation ditches in there is likely gonna create a problem for the trees. Preventing the clearcutting of the land, don't need to say anything more about that one. Preserve the country atmosphere and natural environment, define the community character of the city and make it unique and desirable as described in the comprehensive plan. Again, you won't know this was here five years down the road, or ten years, or however long it takes us to finish the whole thing, right? It will still look like it does right now. The barn will always be the center point, the hill will be covered in trees, it will feel like a country and that's absolutely. Mitigate the ill effects of rapid and intense urbanization. As I mentioned, less than four total acres out of fourteen and a half are being developed. So there's, I mean, clearly, this is not what you would see in an urban environment. In an urban environment, they build it all the way to the buffer setbacks, right? Prevent the unwarranted removal of protected specimen majestic or historic trees within the city or ETJ. Again, that's really the heavy focus of this one, big trees. And then this last one, the only other place where we need a little bit of variance, it's the only place in two that mentions new trees. Preserve existing trees and encourage planting of new trees to provide environmental elements necessary to protect and preserve water sheds in the city limits and the ETJ by reducing the amount of pollutants runoff and sediment entering the streams. As I mentioned, the trenching is counterproductive in this case because of how many trees we maintain. I'm gonna have to fertilize breeding trees, so the runoff will, from future storms, will not only be carrying soil, but it'll be carrying fertilizer with it as well. If we were stripping this thing there, that'd be a different story. We're not doing that one. So that one seems, again, to me to be one of the two places where we're actually asking for variance and we're in the stated purpose to sell it, it's counterproductive to dig and plant trees. I was gonna talk about precedent, but we don't have to do that. I think y'all are familiar with variance authority. I'm happy to walk through my points on all that, or I can open it up for questions. But mostly, I guess I'll reiterate that we are aligned with the planning and zoning recommendation of seventy-five thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, which is twenty-eight percent of the total mitigation, plus another forty-eight inches for the screening trees, plus a hundred and sixty-eight and a half at a minimum for the existing four to six-inch trees, where it's fifty-three percent. That's basically what we're asking for, is to bear it into the remaining forty-seven percent.
Do you have any public comment? We have Mr. Brandon.
Malan.
Excuse me?
Malan, is his name, Brandon Malan.
Malan, sorry.
Mayor, Council. Nice to be here tonight. Last time I was here, I was here for the self-storage facility, so I promised myself I would do a better job tonight. But I'd like to be here, yeah, issue considering me local, I have a habit of going through y'all's agendas and this is a really nice development. Really, they've done a really great job, definitely. I work for other cities, so I'm used to seeing some of the things that come in, so this is really nice. Only reason I wanted to come tonight is because I, if I were in y'all's position, I'd feel like a little bit of a pickle because, you know, my, my opinion, look at this, you're not just making a decision about this development, you're kind of making a decision about all developments. And so, you know, Mr. Cook made the point about the wellhead developers, and he's absolutely right, you know, a lot of wellhead developers may not come in and propose something that's nice, but I'll tell you, in my experience, they have the resources to pay the fees in lieu that we're talking about tonight, a lot of times they do. I will also tell you those, I work with those wellhead developers now sometimes, and they're watching this meeting tonight. I promise you, they're watching and they're gonna see what you guys inside. And so, I understand each variance, you know, you take it on a case-by-case basis, but they're gonna come in in a couple months and say, hey, you gave it to him. And they're gonna wonder and you can't say, well, you don't get it because you're wellhead from Alaska, wasn't. So I just want, and having been in y'all's position, I really ties with that. So definitely encourage y'all to take that into consideration. People are watching. It could be said that whatever decision y'all make tonight is gonna really kind of change the law for you guys. The other thing, and so this is where, that's just my kind of observation, but in terms of trying to offer solutions to y'all, there was one thing that really stuck out to me and I did hear it in the DNC meeting, was one of the variances for the drip line requirements, right? Yeah, absolutely. So that was, that was a big, so that's one, you know, having spent a little time writing the tree preservation requirements you guys are looking at tonight and looking at the use for different cities too, that one just kind of concerned me. I'm not arborist, but, you know, I listened to the DNC and, you know, there was some discussion about trees not making sense in parking lots and I think there's a difference with trees that are already existing when you go put impervious coverage down versus trees that are planted with impervious coverage. So I would, you know, I think, in my opinion, if I were in y'all's position, I'd ask some sort of arborist, maybe to say, hey, I'm an arborist and I have no problem putting pavement within five feet of the trunk zone of a twenty-four inch oak tree. Like, if that's something y'all are gonna be, if I were in y'all's position, I'd want an arborist to say, hey, you know what, that code requirement doesn't apply. And the last thing, I almost said, last thing, there was discussion about pervious coverage. So if you guys thought about doing pervious, like perma-grid, which comes right up, that drains completely, I've seen projects where perma-grid actually removes the need for detention zones completely. And if you guys did perma-grid, you could have consistent paving and it makes you get rid of some of the detention ponds and you can save some trees. And that would be less fee and lieu, less variance there. So, anyway. Thank you all.
All right, well done.
Thanks.
Mr. Campbell?
I'm Mayor, Council, Clint, Chris. My name is Ryan Campbell. I've been in the hill country since 2015. I've been in the city limits since 2018. I am one of the Councilor Goss neighbors. I'm a father and I'm a consumer and I'm a resident. In terms of being a father, I have three children. My two youngest, Zelda and Dagney, love going to the market days. And the sad part is, when you go to market days, we're at the market and then there's, right now, not a whole lot else to do. We pack up and go home. Or we leave Bullverdy and go somewhere else. We need projects like this. As a resident, I love Bullverdy. I've had a chance to, right now, I've worked in Congress. I could move to Congress and have a much shorter commute. I'm general counsel for AHP Foundation Company. I get it five o'clock in the morning just to beat traffic and at five o'clock in the afternoon when I come out of the office, coming from Congress all the way across sixteen oh-four to twenty-one, that is a long journey and I still want to live in Bullverdy. I like these projects because these projects help me enjoy my town a little bit more. I don't want to live in a giant age away, but I also don't want to live suddenly from there. That being said, when someone does the paperwork, to try to get as much of the project to look like the existing culture, that matters, that matters a lot. And it's not just other developers that are watching this, it's your neighbors, it's your voters, it's your dads and moms, your consumers. If you want us to be able to stay in the town and, you know, spend some dollars, but more importantly, spend some time, some time being with our fellow townies, if you want to build a culture, it's projects like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Question?
We have a question. Eric, please, we back up a second.
Yes.
Well, I'm like, it's, most of the information is with the records, we just were taken. Mr. Campbell, can you go to those last couple of images that have the orange, orange circles on them? So, we did cover all this in planning and zoning. There's two of these, they're in the background. The stable verities ordinance says you cannot put impervious cover under the drip line, which I understand to be the furthest out point of the canopy of the tree. And when you look around the hill country, see lots of trees, lots of trees that hang well out over roads, well out over houses. There are developments that have been built, that have been built with those trees already existing. If you look at this map and the facts, you'll see that the vast majority of the impacts are just on the edge, like that line of beautiful trees between the detention and the barn, all the stuff over there by the farmer market, they're barely encroaching on those. The diggings, in fact, I think all of the diggings are where the existing driveway arc is and they're right up against both the house, that big river there, between the house and driveway already, it's already well within, well within the drip line. No, it's a busted up, busted up, it might have been just on top of it. No, I think, I think it, yeah, it's got big puddles in it, I think it's, it's a bad fall, or it wasn't just, I'm sorry, there were big chunks of solid material that hold here, gigantic. So there's only a few of them that would be, I would say, heavily impacted. What we have proposed is, the city of Austin uses a rule of thumb, not a rule of thumb, but as an ordinance that requires protection, no impervious cover inside the half-critical root zone. And so between our landscape architect and our engineer, this plan is intended to protect the half-critical root zone. We will have an arborist onsite every day of construction, making sure, and if we have to, Mr. Bat's pretty much wrong, but I believe, I know the ordinance says we can't, nothing of, within five feet, right? That would certainly not be the case with this plan, but would we need any kind of variance to use a product like Trowand suggested? If, if I had an arborist onsite, you said, Matt, this one's not gonna work right here.
No, the ordinance requires pervious pavement, so all we would do is have our engineers verify that your product is indeed pervious and then you could use it without.
Right, so I can assure y'all that if we come across, I don't want to take a single one of those here, but I gotta build a road to access the property. We will have an arborist onsite for every day that we're close to those trees and if he calls it and says, hey, we need to go with impervious cover, we'll have that in the plan. We're just asking permission for the variance so that we can make those determinations as we go, right? All I can say is, I'm not gonna lose one of those trees for pavement over impervious cover. In the long term, if the tree can be protected with pervious, with impervious cover, it will be a more efficient and cost-effective way to construct the project. And, you know, overall, better service for the people that drive along. Can we go to the second one, the next one? Yeah, there you can see, again, the vast majority of those impacts are well outside five foot from the trunk, just barely underneath the extension of the limbs. And like I mentioned, we have that big tree with the roundabout, which, that one may very well end up having those favor or some kind of, you know, pervious cover, but Steph wrote the recommendation to have it, you know, site-wide so that we can, as I understand it, work through that during construction. Again, I think if you look around town, you know, just down forty-six, down in front of like, the Goodwill area, in front of the puppy shop there, there's a retaining wall that's like three feet from a row of pointing street.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for letting me jump in there. Thank you.
Do we have any more speakers?
No, just we don't. I have something on the stage. Thank you, Mr. Mr. Cook. I, I'd like your plan, however, I do have some concerns that I want to share, okay? Let me say the falling forgot, okay? I'm asking that we take falling into account when making this decision tonight. The city's ordinance just to be fully applied and the decision that body makes today will greatly affect the city for a long time to come. We have all criticized and questioned decisions that have been made before today. We as a body need to enforce the rules equally or we will face legal battles in the future, which will be more costly than that about what we could award in this variant. We need to be very prudent, conservative, how we handle it. We can't just neuter or buy one. I also want to add that financial hardship is not grounds for approval of variants. There is no subjectivity or legit hardship in this proposal and if we approve this without a legit hardship, we might as well change the code and the city will greatly suffer the consequences. I like this, I want to review it. Okay, so let's look at the future of what you're asking and where the city's gonna be, right? You're gonna make your money and move on. The city will be forgotten and left, you know, with major features regarding if we need to do that. There should be a need to pay or do something quantifiable that would match what variance requires. The city should not be financing a path for development. This has to be something analytical, which can be applied to all developments from here on out. I also want to ask, what is your rush? Please get us an arborist that would supply a letter that building inside the drip line would be okay. I'd like to see a letter from them and have them say that that would be okay. I like the idea of the perma-grid and there's ways that we can do this. You know, my thoughts are, if we could, you know, maybe consider payment in phases, we get an arborist, the drip line, it's not good for the trees, we know that, okay? And by will, it's Mr. Cook. We are not driving the apple head of reasonable use on the land as dictated by zoning. We're standing up for the Bullverdy residents. Bullverdy has been bearing the burden of living with the consequences of decisions made by developers whose only goal is making as much money as possible. You say you care about the city and I really do think that y'all do, but have we thought about the long-term issues this will cause and accrue? The vision for downtown Bullverdy is places to go, family venues, walking and enjoying retail and restaurants. Nowhere do we talk about office space in our vision for tomorrow. We need to apply our guidelines equally and we need to figure out how that can work and how we can work together to make that happen. We just don't want it to be that at the end of the day, we have no peace and we have no trees. I'm willing to listen to everything that everybody has to say and add that to it.
I would like to ask, you're our trainee tonight? So in regards to a variance, if we would allow and approve this variance and the argument is setting a precedence for future variance requests, and if we reject those, would they have some legal footing to sue the city?
So each variance is specific to land use, their applying, there would be a fact that indicates for each area.
So I could sit right here, approve this variance, the next variance that comes through and I reject it, even though they're similar, there's no legal repercussions from that decision in terms of if it was?
Generally speaking, there's no.
Right, 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 but would there be enough of an argument for it to be a risk to the city?
I think, why would you take that in exactly direction?
Okay.
Yes.
All right, can we talk about?
Well, I've got a couple things, so, much like the mayor mentioned, I don't, I don't think there's a timeline on this, right? You know, like, it's not a timeline critical, like, deal breaker, is it, that I understand? Or is there a timeline other than you trying to make, keep the business open, right? I mean, but there's not like a, a sale of a property or something that you're waiting on for?
Actually, we are on the contract to sell the property next door and we have bills to pay and we don't have the money. There is, there is a substantial, substantial sale that we're holding until this happens.
Okay, so that leads me into my next question. What's, why did it start with a tree variance? Like, is this, this is the first time this, this project's come to the city, right?
In its entirety, yes.
Right, so, from my information, why didn't it come with a tree order? Just so I'm understanding that.
That's the only, these are the only two variances.
Okay.
Cut and fill and everything else.
Well, and?
Cut and fill, we have complied with by the design and layout, this is all we need. That and the CPOA we got earlier to not put up, to put up a pipe and larks instead of a wall, which the residents all are.
And you're, you're saying you're gonna sell these, you're gonna replat these as you sell them, or are you gonna replat this, these little lots?
No, sir, I don't believe that's necessary to.
I believe you said you were gonna have condominium set up.
Right.
One lot in, yeah.
Right.
It's already been planted and then, you don't have to replat it if you use a condominium or a structure.
Okay, so there's no intent replating. Do you have, is this currently on a septic system?
No, sir, each building will be responsible for their own septic.
So it will be on a septic system for each building?
There may be, you know, a few of them that can share one, but yes, sir, I mean, there's no.
Has that been calculated into this plan? This has been calculated, like, leach fields potential?
I have no idea. Everything's been taken into account.
I guess, so, you've done Okay. Okay. So there's no intent replating. Um, do you have, is this currently on a, a septic system?
No, sir. Each building will be responsible for their own.
So it will be on a septic system for each building?
There may be, you know, a few of them that can share one, but yes, sir. I mean, there's no.
Has that been calculated into this plan? This has been calculated, like leach fields potential?
I have no idea. Everything's been taken into account.
I guess so. You've done good things here. I'm not saying you haven't. We appreciate you. I think this is a good idea. Pipe spend. Just I feel, I mean, I don't know about where's the council mayor, but feel like we're losing an opportunity here to work something with the city maybe. Like I wish we would add maybe a little bit more of a, a workshop first and see if we could have worked something out. What I mean by that is that if it's trees that are a variance, maybe we could have done something out. You know, work something out with a regional stormwater detention or something like that. Because this downtown area is all we have left, right? So getting that to a shape that makes the downtown area what it is, just, you know, one of those things that I keep looking at, right? And, and if we go with this plan, well, it's only this plan and then look at everything else. So if we were to work together with, like with the city, maybe come to a conclusion or something, maybe we have more to say, okay, you know what, we can get an interlocal agreement with you to do this development and live up doing the, you know, the cash for, what if we work something out in a different aspect to make this something for the whole downtown area? To start that downtown, you know, rehabilitation, I guess, or this downtown life that we're looking for. You know, I think at that point it could have, you know, and this is just me talking and I know that, you know, we all have property rights and we all want, we have an idea, but I just feel like we could have worked potentially of doing something different instead of saying, hey, you know, we're just talking about trees today. But we missed the fact that maybe we could have worked something else out instead of the tree only being the issue. We'll let you, you know, we'll let you make your development with the trees. If we can do something different with a regional detention or, you know, some type of improvement in the downtown frontage to, to start that process of making that downtown area something that everything can come together. You know, much as much as your, as your market days, you know, where we start that downtown vibe and get that moving. But, you know, coming for a tree ordinance, it's, it's, it's just like, this is all, this is a big plan. You know, I mean, it's a lot going on with it. If I look at it as a tree, tree thing, that's one thing, right? But you look at it as a whole, it's a whole other area. Like I'm looking at it in a whole different angle. So, um, that's just some of my comments as far as that goes. Um, the, the buildings itself too. You, you have these parking in here, but we don't know necessarily what they're going to be. So how'd you do the parking based off of what occupancy? Just a square footage?
Okay. That's the way I'll use it.
Okay. So what are they, what are they, you're going on the commercial, like condominium? It's on location, I heard restaurants. So they have different occupancy uses and different loads.
I think we assume the, whatever the highest, the under that C two uses, the highest per square foot, that's what's built into it with extra. I don't remember how many spaces, but more, more than what the max total requirement.
Can a condominium structure be used for something like a restaurant? I hadn't seen that. I mean, I'm not saying. I said, see.
I have, not here.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think, I think the way that this was presented to us, it's very obvious to me that Mr. Cook has bent over backwards to satisfy the idealistic, the fundamental ideals of our tree ordinance. You look at the, at the site map, these buildings are specifically sized to avoid removal of trees, which they're righted to without an or a bearing under C two. So you look at the roads, you look at the drainage, it's all been carefully mapped at the expense of the developer to protect the trees. And it's just, you know, we have the drip lines and everything, but, um, yeah, I think the mitigation you originally have cash and will of in your original. And now you, you raised the cash and will of the seventy-five thousand. I think that's great. I mean, we talked about watering these trees, trenching for irrigation, stuff like that. And I realize it's going to be hard to plant these trees on such a densely wooded property. So, I mean, I'm glad to see the seventy-five thousand dollars in there or whatever the cash amount was. I mean, we could even use that money to plant trees at the ten acre park across from your property. I mean, then you wouldn't have an empty lot to look at. I mean, your trees would be over there. So it's very obvious to me that they, they've thought very hard about our tree preservation and our requirements. And this, it's very obvious in the plans.
I concur.
Thanks. All right. Do, do we have a, I thought we had done away with the tree fund?
No, we still. No, we spent all of it. Uh, we have on the tenant car. And part of that has to be dedicated to tree preservation space. Uh, I don't think we've had a significant new deposit in it since then. I think it has about seventy-five thousand in it.
Right. And the, the cash and blue amount is very, pretty significant amount. I mean, that.
There's, there's a few things that fell in line that I address from this conversation. Um, as far as the vision and whether or not a project like this meets with the vision. A few things I hadn't, I can get around reading earlier. Diversify and expand the tax and economic base to promotion of desired business activities. Promote Belverde doesn't attract the center for retailing, services, healthcare. I would imagine, I, I know basically all of that falls within C two and those are the sorts of things that we're marketing to. Um, this one, so the, the consultants who conducted the P P division statement, they did a number of like town halls where they asked for community impact. And one of the quotes that they received during that feedback, it's on page thirty-nine, bullet number two of the P P division, is that do we need a business park in the area between the existing village highway two one? That's what we're proposing, a business park.
So this is the blank canvas for small business?
Yes, sir. A hundred percent. That's, that's a great way to say it. It's a blank canvas for small business, people who want to have their shop in the village, whatever shop that might be. Um, if you read the vision, the types, well, and let me go back to the zone. If zone, see, the base zoning is C two.
Right.
So at some point the city thought that list of items is what we want here. And that means that that's all I'm allowed to do with my right. My only property right is to develop this thing for that commercial purpose. And again, I, I would, I would like to know if there's an ordinance or something in the charter that says council is not allowed to consider to consider economic gain specifically with commercial property. Because the definition of commercial use according to Black Law Dictionary is to develop for profit. So the idea that the city can zone in commercial, limit my, everything I can do to it to just commercial purposes, but then tell me we don't give a damn if it makes a dollar.
No, that's fine.
We don't care if it make a dollar.
I think the only reason that that's something to play in the reason to talk about is because, um, financial costs and is not considered a hardship when it comes to a variance, specifically for a variance. If you were not asking for a variance, it would immediately be popped out. If you were just coming, following all of our ordinance, uh, building under your C two, your C two designation or whatever it is, it's C one. Building under C two. Uh, none of that would come into play if you had by right deal, just do whatever you want. As long as it was in no dispute. The only time that the monetary came in is because we're looking at basis for a variance. And we have lists of what's a basis for a variance. And financial hardship is not one.
Where are those publics?
Um, so this is a public hearing, not law school. Uh, that's covered not just in the ordinance, it's not just in state law, but also, uh, quote rulings over the years. Financial hardships are considered a self-imposed hardship. You're not allowed to justify variance with a self-imposed hardship.
Even when the whole purpose of the, the Celtic.
Again, the purpose is not to discuss them all or leak underpinnings here.
But the Celtic, the Celtic position was to, to meet the stated purpose of the ordinance.
You may put less buildings on the property. That's a financial decision you've made for a certain return on investment.
Good. There's also, there, there is things like quiet use, quiet use and joinings. Um, there are other property rights that we have that are somewhat limited, we can't partial concept. But looking at our property and seeing the wildflowers that have been growing this year is absolutely something we want to be able to do. And digging the trenches to plant the additional trees would impair that as well. Developing it for commercial use is a property right we have. And there is definitely a possibility because of how we run the project, that we won't be able to do that if this, if this was strictly enforced. That's, that's a reality.
Well, yeah, it's obvious to me that you offset your profitability by trying to work towards a tree preservation order. I mean, this could have looked completely different as your rock business C two on. And, um, I think you're, you're doing good by working in the right way to preserve the hill country atmosphere, the village or tree preservation.
So, yeah, I, I think it's. There, there was something said about us making our money and I guess leaving town. But as I started with, we live here, we live in four-one-one, from Alaran and from Altrace. We absolutely intend, unless God tells us, we have to leave today, we love it. We're not going in. And Councilman Alexander, your point about like a meeting, that's not something that's ever been broached as an option. We thought if we were following the vision and following the stated purpose of the ordinance, that we were aligned with the city. I would love to see going forward, that's something that is promoted as an option that like, hey, come, come in, tell us your idea and let's see how it fits with everything else that's going on and see if we can come up with something. But even, you know, even on that, we've looked at the old map. I don't know if that's still valid, but you know, the, the development vision for the future, we were taking that into account if we designed this out too, right? So it would have been great to know that we could have called that. I don't know if that's something that would be allowed to actually be with council members and the mayor on, or if that would be just something to deal with the staff.
We could have probably done just a, a try, like a workshop, you know, it didn't have to be a public meeting, but it could have been presented. Uh, I think it's still an option. I mean, that's, I mean, it, it would delay it, but I mean, it might still be an option where we could.
I don't know. But. The times we've done that in the past where have the different statutory mechanisms, this property is not eligible for like the development agreements and things like that. So I can't give you an answer tonight on what process that would fit in, uh, the legal constraints we have. But this specific. My personal thoughts somewhere, I'm falling on it. Um, I wish we had the arborist letter. Um, I, I don't know why that's a big issue considering we've had arborists out there multiple times. You know, you had them do another tree site. I don't know why a letter would have, you know, they would give us a little more feeling about. My biggest concern on all this is the journal. Okay. I personally don't think that the site would lend itself to the remediation by planting additional, additional, uh, additional trees. I agree with you on that. Okay? For that, in my mind, I would be okay going past the twenty-five percent in the ordinance to the fifty percent by just common sense, looking at the site, knowing how it is. Okay. So for me, the biggest concern is that your plan. Because I'm afraid that we would lose some of these trees that you've done so much just trying to save. Um, that's, I don't know, that's just.
I don't know if I know what the septic, you know, like, I don't know what that looks like either. I don't know if I'm any more upset. But you got the spray fields.
I mean, I mean, that's a lot of work. I mean, done well, that could be, that could be a bit.
Yeah, I was gonna say. The effluent from all the little septic tanks, you're going to be distributing throughout various rainfields.
Yeah, there, there's experts that can design it.
To complement the trees.
I'm not, I'm not as concerned about that. Um,
Uh, as far as getting an arborist letter, um, it took me better part of two months to get an arborist to come back up to each account and actually it's still, I guess, slipped my mind to ask him while he was out there to try to, he, they went out there on Thursday last week. After I'd been trying to get arborists out there for a while. Our original survey was in twenty, I think, fall of twenty-one, might have been twenty-two, before we really had developed any plans. So, um, like I said, I, I know what the city of Austin requires and it's the, you know, most environmentally conscious city in the state. Um, and it's a much less restricted ordinance in this one.
We've got one of these. And we pride ourselves in that.
And I, I, I hope y'all see that I support the tree ordinance. I would love to, if someone came in and tried to claim that they have a claim to precedent based on this project, I, I would take three minutes to get up there and say, why don't you meet these ten required, ten purposes of this stuff?
I can, I can see by your design that you have been.
Oh, yeah, you could have made this a lot more problematic.
Yeah, this is like Lorax proved, the way that this is quite extensive.
So Danny, let me ask, what are our options here? I mean, I don't think we want to kill what we're doing here, right? But we also want to figure out how we can work together and figure out what we can do. We would like to see the letter from the arborist, the councilman, hey, mention.
I'd like to hear what our attorney, we can tell us.
And then I would like to have that also, the attorney's counsel, um, in executive session. But before we go there. Can you give me an idea of?
Sure. What happened here?
Can you give me an idea of?
Stop the video. Mm-hmm. I'm going to have to come back in. Here we go.
You're okay?
Yeah.
You keeping up with all this?
I was, I was getting ready to make some comments.
This year, but then you missed that last part.
Hmm. All right. How did I kill this session?